Imperial Planning Commission Order for June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at six fifty-three in the evening, or six thirty-five in the evening. Roll call.
Commissioner Rivera.
Present.
Commissioner Taratha Baxter here. Chairperson Hamonis.
Here.
Commissioner Obadi and Vice Chairperson Harvey is at for the record.
We all stand and pledge allegiance. Commissioner Rivera.
Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Did we see it? Do you have any adjustments to the agenda at this time?
Um, yes, I believe the uh, the agenda under, under the consent indicates minutes for, for May fourth. We were just talking about that. There was a miscommunication. I, 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 I prepared those minutes because Christina was not here and I sent, sent him to the wrong email. So she never got him. So, but when we get there, the minutes for May four will not be part of the consent.
Kind of wondering because I hadn't seen any. So I kind of thought with that, we were going to go that direction. Uh, public appearances, B one, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson. And at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anybody here this evening that wishes to speak to us on an item that is not currently listed on the agenda? Nope. All right. Moving on. Uh, under the consent agenda, uh, we won't, uh, we don't have a consent agenda. So, uh, due to, uh, emailing error, so we will skip consent agenda. Unless we want to vote on not having a consent agenda. These things happen. Yes, sir.
Yes, it's outside right now.
No, it's, it's okay. Uh, public hearing discussion action, uh, recommend deny, D one. Public hearing discussion action recommended approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero one. For Beatrice Gonzalez for the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at El Zarape Restaurant located at one thirty-nine South Imperial Avenue. I'm gonna, we'll have a staff report from, uh, Othon Mora Community Development Department. I'm opening public hearing at this time. Staff report.
Good evening Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Lorena Galindo. I'm in the Community Development Technician and I will be presenting tonight's public hearing. So first item on the agenda, we have D dash one C U P twenty-three dash zero one for El Zarape. The item before you is a conditional use permit to allow the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages at El Zarape Restaurant located at one thirty-nine South Imperial Avenue. The applicant and owner of El Zarape Restaurant, Beatrice Gonzalez, applied for a type forty-seven A B C license with the Department of Alcohol and Beverage Control. The approval of the C U P is required to allow the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages in the existing hours of operation of nine A M through eleven P M, Monday through Saturday. The project is categorically exempt from the CEQA under section one five three zero one. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Hoville Tribune and Collegial Chronicles on June first, twenty twenty-three. The notices were mailed to property owners within thirty feet of the project site. Sorry, my apologies, three hundred, three hundred feet of the project site. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero one for El Zarape Restaurant to allow the onsite sale and consumption of alcoholic beverages. Any questions or comments?
We received any additional written correspondence since the last time we've had contact?
We didn't receive anything.
Okay. Any questions for the staff before we move on? No?
No, not on this end.
Okay, um, this time we'll open it up to, uh, public comment. Anybody here wish to, uh, from El Zarape wish to speak at this time? Okay, if we have questions for you, you'll be asked to come up here and, and, uh, address those. Well, only if we have any questions. We'll find out in a minute. All right. Anybody have any, uh, questions for, uh, uh, El Zarape?
Um, just, I guess, um, is this a new application or reapplication? I mean, did they have this before? They're just updating it or is this completely brand new?
Come on up to the mic. Now you got, now you gotta be recorded.
It's the same application that was filed first as you, there was a, an error on the, uh, what was it called? The, when, no, the one I took for you guys, you guys sent me the information. I forgot what it's called, that, uh, form. And I, I just returned it back to the city so they can correct. Instead of putting El Zarape Restaurant Inc., they put El Zarape Restaurant.
Okay.
But it's the same application, the first, from the first.
But this is your first application for this business?
Yes, yes, for this location, the only location that we have.
And the, the difference is because you already sold beer and wine, right?
Yes.
So this is hard alcohol.
Yes.
So you want to be able to make margaritas or stuff, stuff like that?
That's the main thing.
Okay, okay. That's what I thought, but I wanted to clarify on that one. All right, and this time I'm gonna close, uh, close the public hearing portion so you can have a seat. Thank you. Any other, uh, discussion from the commissioners?
No, a motion to approve the recommended action here of the issue.
Seconded, moved and seconded. Call for the vote. All right, is our voting working? There it is. There it is.
Motion carries three zero.
All right, that's it. I'll be looking for, how soon before I can get that margarita?
Where you, I, I see under the background, someone asked about beer and wine, and I see in the second line at the end, offering the sale of alcohol, beer and wine. I don't, I, I don't know. Depending on how you construct English, you could interpret alcohol to be hard alcohol and then beer and wine to be also. So I gather that was the intent of the application for alcohol, beer and wine. Okay, and I, and I would not send the conditional use permit, um, one of the lines, right? In the C U P, I think? Or where, where are you pointing that out? So I, just in the staff report on the first page, the second line. I quickly looked at the conditions of approval. It just says alcoholic beverage. It doesn't specify, uh, whether it's spirits, beer and wine, all three, or, uh, but I, I'll say I-
Performance Form forty, forty-seven, it's forty-seven. Right now I have, uh, foot, forty-one, license forty-one and I'm applying for forty-seven.
I think just to make the record clear, the intent is to allow the sale of spirits as well as beer and wine.
That's what I, that's what I averaged. That's what I, my meager mind pulled out of it. Yeah, okay. So, does that fall into the area for the city attorney to make minor adjustments without changing the, the scope of?
Yeah, it, it, to the extent any clarification is required, given your discussion and the action, I would say we're okay. Those adjustments could be made.
We're still okay.
Thank you.
That was easy. Maybe we should just be three people. All right, moving on, uh, D two, public hearing discussion action, recommended approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero two for Omar Fernandez for the construction of a fifteen-foot accessory structure within a residential zone located at three twenty North F Street. We have the, I'm gonna open public hearing at this time. Staff report on this, please.
Second item, D dash two, C U P twenty-three dash zero two for Omar Fernandez. This public hearing is for resident Omar Fernandez. Mr. Fernandez is proposing to install a fifteen-foot storage shed within his property located at three twenty North F Street. A conditional use permit is required to allow the installation of an accessory structure that deviates from the allowable twelve-foot maximum within a residential zone. The project is categorically exempt from the CEQA under section one five three zero one. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Hoville Tribune and Collegial Chronicles on June first, twenty twenty-three and notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero two for Omar Fernandez to allow the installation of the fifteen-feet storage shed with agreed upon conditions of approval. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes. Yes, it's actually, one second here.
On, on page?
Well, that's technically the site plan. Okay.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Right, but you want to like see what the building's gonna look at, right?
Well, I was curious and that's why, no, it was fine though.
So we have, yeah, we, so we have the, the aerial view there and then we also have the, the plans as a backup.
Okay.
Okay. Do you have any questions for the, uh, is the property owner here? He is not. No representatives at all. Okay. I guess we won't be asking him any questions.
We did contact the owner. Um, he did mention he was going to show to the meeting tonight, but his absence is, he's absent from the meeting today.
Hmm.
Here, I would, I would say if you have questions for the applicant that staff can't address, then you're, you're, you could, you could, you could continue the, you could take action to
Yeah.
get those answers.
Yes. Uh, we haven't received any additional public or written response to this complaint or anybody since, okay. Do we have any, do we have any questions we need addressed that we can't get addressed because he's not here? You?
I would just, did you, when I got my, uh, visual print, print A and eleventh and I couldn't quickly put in N Street or F Street. Um.
I would just offer, Mr., uh, Mr. Chairperson and Commission, my understanding of this project is that the C U P addresses only height. So unlike some other buildings of this sort that you've addressed, there aren't setback issues and things like that.
Right, I was actually reading that in the, uh, C U P and then also the site plans. I also was noticing that east of there, one or two lots, maybe a block, there's a pretty large metal structure over there that's probably pretty close in height to what this guy wants. So somewhere some point in time, somebody else got a variance for a similar structure. Actually, I think that one's bigger as far as the footprint.
Uh, maybe, um, someone you may remember, there's a couple of, uh, storage sheds that exceed that, that height. But before, uh, we didn't have, uh, the requirement of a conditional use permit for those. So they were permitted under, under zoning ordinance back in the day.
Right. But it still opens the potential for
Correct.
they got one, why can't I have one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, you guys shared that you guys provided proper noticing to the neighbors. We didn't receive any written correspondence or?
Any calls or anything? Um, and one of the things that we, we, uh, we also did is that we sent it to I I D. Uh, because of the proximity of the power lines, uh, we sent them to them. If there were any issues in the, um, Eastmans that we can, we should worry about and also any encroachment requirements and, and the I D cleared that for us. So they have no comments.
Okay, do we, I, I'm gonna ask before I close because I technically can't close a public hearing if we want to continue the public hearing because he's not here, correct? Okay, so since I can't do that, I'm gonna ask you both, do we want to just close it and vote on it? Are we happy enough with what we know? Or is there anything that we think we need to glean or some concern on this project that we need to glean from the, uh, property owner?
I don't have any questions or concerns for the applicant.
Feel like it's good, good to go? Because staff also recommends that it's approved, okay?
Yeah, I, I feel, I mean, I got the blueprints now, so, and, um, with what we just discussed.
Okay, so we can all right. So at this time, I'm gonna close public hearing. And I need a motion like a motion for the action.
I move to, uh, approve conditional abuse permit twenty-three act zero two.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Call for the vote.
Motion carries three zero.
Efficiency. One more left, yeah, yeah. We, do we need to slow down because everybody wants to stay here longer? All right, moving on to, uh, D three. Uh, approve resolution, uh, P C twenty twenty-three dash, ooh, I'm on, I'm in the wrong line. Yeah, no, yeah, that was definitely the wrong line. Sorry, D three. I started D three, then I started to read resident, never mind. Uh, public hearing discussion action recommended approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero four for Francisco Gonzalez for the installation of a fifteen-foot, four-inch accessory structure within the residential zone located at three seventeen South K Street. I'm gonna open public hearing at this time. And can we have the staff report, please?
Item D three, C U P twenty-three dash zero four for Francisco Gonzalez. Francisco Gonzalez also applied to install a fifteen-foot, four-inch manufactured storage shed within his property located at three seventeen South K Street. Mr. Gonzalez is proposing to install the fifteen-foot, four-inch storage shed between his main dwelling and accessory dwelling unit on his property. A conditional use permit is required to allow the installation of an accessory structure that deviates from the allowable twelve-foot maximum within a residential zone. The project is categorically exempt from the CEQA under section one five three zero one. The public hearing was duly noticed in the Hoville Tribune and Collegial Chronicles on June first, twenty twenty-three and notices were mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of the project site. Staff recommends the approval of conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero four for Francisco Gonzalez to allow the installation of the fifteen-foot point four inches storage shed with agreed upon conditionals, conditions of approval. The applicant is here to answer any question, questions you may have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for the applicant at this time? Or for staff or anybody else? And again, we didn't receive anything, no correspondence, the-
No correspondence.
Any questions? That would be it. I am curious, and maybe this is more of a staff thing than this thing. Um, on our last applicant, at the top of the resolution, it has the height and the full length and width, and on this man's, it has a height, but doesn't have the length and width in the, uh, first line of the resolution, whereas, and I'm wondering if that was just a accidental omission that we need to add that?
On, on the resolution?
Page five. First line after the, uh, bold. Yep, first whereas. The first whereas.
I, I, I would also, I, I would just add that although we all know from the introductory part that we're talking about height, this does not indicate which dimension the fifteen point, the fifteen feet, four inches.
Right, does it, uh? It doesn't say height on that either, yeah.
So, I think, I-
I think we need to fix that. That's something we need to make a motion to fix, or can we simply have staff make those adjustments after we're done with this?
I think it's appropriate, Othon, if you could make it very clear when the motion is being made, where we could add that into the item. So for instance, if, if one of the, the members makes a motion to approve, you say with the following changes and clarify the, the heights and the additional dimensions.
Yeah, because it just-
Yeah.
But it's, you know, right. But again, that's not the applicant's error, um. So anyway, back to commissioners, any questions for the, uh, because I think I saw on the back on the schematics the oh, sir, mister, my apologies, Mr. Gonzalez, you here? Could you come up to the mic, please?
All right, all right, um. Mr., Mr. Chair, if we, if, if, uh, if he's gonna have a translator, there's probably a little blurb we should go through. And, and so I'll, I'll, I'll do that. Okay, so
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez is the applicant, right? And, and what is your name?
My name is Adam Rivera.
Okay, and you're gonna translate?
I'm gonna try to translate.
Okay, and so I, I would ask that, um, you, you ask Mr. Gonzalez to speak in short phrases.
No problem.
And that you translate as best you can, word for word.
Okay.
So for example, I, I would, I, it's not gonna be helpful if he speaks for thirty seconds and then you, you comes to the translation and you say yes, right? With, so as best, as best you can, do you translate word for word, okay? And so, and so if you raise your right hand, I'm gonna give you a little oath that's it, that where you say you're gonna do your best to translate, okay? I, I state your name. Say, I, I-
I state your name.
Yeah, your name.
Oh, I state my name, Adam Rivera.
Okay, uh, uh, do affirm.
Repeat after me.
Do you have to repeat after me?
Okay.
Do affirm
Do affirm.
that I will, uh, to the best of my ability
The, the best of my ability.
translate from Spanish to English.
Translate to, uh, Spanish to English.
And English to Spanish.
And English to Spanish.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I can't remember my question. Um, what was it? Oh, what are the dimensions? What are the, what is, what is the footprint?
Well, Adrian bring the, uh, the blueprint, uh, which, you might have it here.
He doesn't know the dimensions of building he wants to build?
Othon, do you have it?
Yes, we have it. It's a twenty by- Yes, we have it, it's a twenty by fifteen feet four inches by fifteen feet high.
What was the foot length and width?
Twenty feet wide.
Okay.
By fifteen. Feet four inches fifteen.
Fifteen, one five long.
One five. Four inches.
Oh, that's height.
No, that's the uh. I'm twenty by fifteen. By fifteen four high, yes.
Fifteen foot wide building.
Yes.
By twenty feet. And fifteen tall.
Fifteen fifteen four tall.
That's a. It's not very big for such a tall roof. Is he gonna gonna? Gonna hang meat in it or what what does he need such a?
Actually, um uh he's planning to do that for to fix his motorcycles and to um park uh. Their cars in in the back of the building, in the back of his house.
Okay.
And if you can just translate for him so he knows what you're saying.
See.
That's perfect. Oh, got it, yeah.
Listen, I have a garage, so the 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 plan to do this is uh. Uh for his own vehicles in. In the back of the house.
I I okay, sure, gotcha. And the the. Structure next to. Find my picture here. Yeah, the one, the preschool. Uh the so. I guess that'd be the south side of his property. The building next to it, is that a that's a preschool or is that?
Is that the church, the faith assembly church?
Do they use it for preschool or is it just they do classes? Do you know offhand? Does he know offhand?
Right behind his house is the church and the preschool is in in the next block.
Right, yeah, the one that's building right.
Uh huh.
Right here. And I looked at that, it looks like it's pretty close to fifteen feet tall, isn't it? When I was over there looking at it, it's pretty tall.
Yeah, it is, it's.
Pretty tall building.
Tall, it's more than fifteen feet.
And the shade also is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Anybody else? Anybody have any more questions?
Um is this simply for for his use or is it, I mean, there was there was a hint towards uh him starting a business?
No, it's for him own use.
Uh how long has he lived there?
Since uh two thousand ten, so that is that is thirteen years. Living in the same place.
Okay. Waiting for you, sir.
How long's he been waiting for uh for this project?
Very has a pyramid, as far as I understand.
Oh, we no, no, we don't.
Not yet?
There there's submitted an application and at the application, that's when we uh notified the owner that he needs he needed to get a conditional use permit for issuing a building permit.
Have any? Any feedback?
Um we um it's pretty straightforward, I mean setbacks are correct, the height, uh the width, and then it's a metal building, so if it's at three feet. Um it will comply with uh fire and building codes, so it's pretty straightforward.
Church didn't have anything to say about it.
Um witnesses receive any comments from anyone.
Alright, good. Alright, I'm gonna close the uh. Public hearing at this time. Have a seat, sir, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, alright, any other?
Would you like back, yeah, to add the dimension?
So with the recommended edits to the resolution and the first whereas including the dimensions of the width and the length.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Specification of height. Correct, okay.
Now we'll second it.
Alright, it's been uh moved and seconded and they didn't wait for the vote. Over the vote.
That's confidence.
Yeah.
That's confidence.
Motion carries three zero.
I'd like to tell him, but I guess he, like I said.
We'll let them know.
Just really confident has in what he saw up here that, oh, they're gonna take care of me. Margarita? Uh alright, do we have any uh? The departments. The department have anything to?
We have, I have nothing to add tonight.
Report?
Nothing, nothing to add.
City manager report.
No city manager report.
What, you wanna tell us about the broken stoplights and the and the hazardous barrels under the street? Oh, wait, just a barrel under the street.
Uh Mr. Chairman, if if I may, I have something. Um real quick.
Is to see, you see, it's just had to give you a second.
So, um well, this is Lorena from Community Development Department, and this is her first presentation. And hopefully uh.
Oh, very good.
You're welcome.
She did a good job already.
Well, see, I didn't know, I wasn't at the last meeting, so you could have been here then, I wouldn't know any better.
Well, thank you for having me.
Our attorney have anything to?
Nothing for me.
What? Alright, alright. City clerk have anything to? Share with us? Alright. Commissioner Rivera, anything you would like to? Bring up?
Um I just wanna outstanding job to to staff on that uh. Getting that light up around Aiden in eighty six. I know that was that was a challenge in itself, but I mean. It's working, it's working, so um also the uh I did follow. Yeah, over in aviation uh. Subdivision. The officers Memorial Park. I'm looking forward to that. And there that's that's all I got right now. It's been a really long two weeks.
It's a lot of make extra.
I like to make life difficult for people, I'm just kidding, um no, no reports from me, I just I apologize for not being able to attend the. I know you guys have been very busy with the different groundbreakings and ribbon cuttings you've had recently, so that's exciting to see. This movement and development here in the city, so just wanna congratulate the staff on the work that you guys are doing and thank you for. The invitation, I apologize, I haven't been able to.
I was gonna ask how the groundbreaking on the thirteenth. Or grand opening rather. Was that a grand opening on the thirteenth of the apartment complex? Yesterday, yes. Not a ground, a ground opening, grand opening.
I know, but.
Yes, I had planned to be there, but I found myself somewhat under the weather for the day yesterday, so I wasn't able to make it. Um but it went well, had a good attendance.
Yeah, yeah. Really nice apartment.
Oh, oh, very good, very good. Um. I guess it's to me now. Um first off, well, I have one thing. Okay, the lights at Neco. And eighty six, right? On the uh the west side. Road, Neco, so if you're on that on. West side of the light. Coming east. And you stop at the light. There, you know, because it's red. There are sensor pads there. I'm assuming, I mean, they look like they're there. Point being is they're not very good. I have sat there multiple times. Waiting to cross and watch the lights cycle through the three sets and never turn mine green. Sometimes I'm lucky and I can back up and re-hit it. And uh. Get it to work. Sometimes it doesn't, I just finally. When it's clear, I just run right, hey, vehicle code says after three cycles. You can do that, I remember that from when I was sixteen. If it's if it's you could. You don't have to put up with that forever. Uh but obviously, and I've seen other cars have the same problem, so I think maybe. We might have a deficiency in the. Pads there, I don't know whether they're not, maybe not. The footprint isn't big enough to catch. Uh cuz it seems like if I'm a little bit too far off the yellow line, and I mean too far like that. I don't catch the center, but if I'm over closer, I seem to be a little better luck. So maybe I don't know if it's something we can address or look at or. Uh uh. That because it's it's, I mean. If it's happening to me, it's gotta be happening to other people, and most times it's happening when I'm in my truck, which is not exactly little. So. We don't want somebody to. Go through three cycles and not pay attention and run the light and get smacked, it would never change. Of course, you could, I guess, make a right turn, which would be safer, but you know, that would be boring. Uh but uh. Yeah, so anyway, we need to wanna look at that uh if we can. Add that the temporary light trailer thing, did we buy that or that like go to? You rent that from the broken light store or how? I thought that was pretty neat, I've never seen anything like that, that orange setup that's like on a trailer. Never seen that before.
I can say a bit about that. As as you probably surmise, the truck took out the signal light. Um the it looks like at least. We're told at this point, like a forty four zero week. Uh lead time to for a new pole. And so Public Services Department located. Basically a mobile. Light, so you see that it's on a trailer. So hopefully it doesn't get a lot of use, but it but it it does provide. Um uh the uh a signal light.
Yeah, it works.
Now, what it what it. What it doesn't do. Though is provide for pedestrian crossing. So we're we're having to deal with that because there the uh. We wanna make sure pedestrians are aware that they're that uh they're not gonna get a walk, don't walk. Uh while this temporary light uh is in use. The other thing to your point about waiting is that the way it is currently set up. Is with a timed each interval. Is gonna change by way of time as opposed to having a camera. And so that intersection does have, when it's operating. Cameras that basically uh w- w- will dictate. To some degree.
Hey, are we still at Aiden or are we over at Neco?
No, no, we're at Aiden.
Okay, okay.
The camera uh appears to be operational. Also, they're they're uh they're trying to see if they can incorporate that as part of the temporary signal. Now, I don't know this configuration. At Neco, whether it is a sensor pad or whether there's a camera there, I gather you don't see a camera mounted on.
Um I believe there's cameras for the uh north-south traffic, but I don't recall cameras for the east-west traffic.
So in any case. That's the situation. At Aiden and eighty six. A signal on a trailer. Long lead time for a permanent replacement.
Well, I thought the signal on trailer was a pretty good idea, I was like, God, wish I'd built one of those so I could rent them to the state or whoever needed them, that's a great way to make some money. Uh but trust me, I knew about it that that morning when it happened, I had a neighbor call me, say, what are you guys gonna do about it? I said, it's not my department. This planning commission doesn't replace poles, that's not what we do. We tell the city, I'm pretty sure they already know, if the police are there, they already know.
I'm not sure what the driver was thinking, but he took that turn. So sharp. That the signal, the pole was in between his tractor and his trailer.
Ooh.
That's how, it wasn't like he caught it with the tail end of his trailer as he was. And so then. The pole is in between his tractor and his trailer.
Yeah.
And he's going back and forth trying to get the pole out and.
Yeah, it just makes it worse, it's like, yeah.
As they were fixing it, that same driver. Made the turn no problem.
Well, was it, it was early in the morning, wasn't it? Maybe he was asleep.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'm not sure what that woke him up.
I bet it did, yeah, no, I bet it did. Um.
Fix the fire hydrant over there, hadn't they?
Well, at least it didn't hit the fire hydrant, that would have dug out the.
We had that fire hydrant's been taken out within the last six, eight months or something.
I I think it was within the last five months. It was just after the new year, somebody had taken it out, had gone directly into it. Now the light.
Well, sometimes people are just aren't paying attention to what they're doing. And truck drivers can be. Usually they're really good at that, so to make a silly mistake like that's kinda. Kind of a head scratcher. I know. Um so. I know we wanna get out of here, we had a short meeting, um so I do have a question. One other question, I've been looking, paying attention to the city website. And we have not, to the best of my knowledge, unless I've missed something. Opened up uh. Applications for the planning commission. Is that? Am I correct that that has not taken place?
Believe I believe that's true. Um may maybe the city attorney could speak to the timing of when the amendment to the ordinance is gonna take effect. But even under the old ordinance. Uh you 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 sit until your successor is appointed. And you and your and the successor can be appointed even under the current version of the ordinance uh after June thirty.
Well, I was just wondering cuz it was made very clear to me by the city council that. My term ends at the end of this month, there was not unless or if it's like. You're done at the end of the month.
If if you're comfortable, um obviously anytime any of you can can step away, but the way that they're both written. Under the old and the new and the new should be in effect shortly. Is that you would serve if you're willing. Up until the replacement's done, and it's my understanding that there was talk of putting it out, but I don't believe that it's been put out yet. So it may be, you know, a a period of time before you get the applications in, so if you'd be willing to sit and continue your term.
If I'm asked, that's one thing, but at this point, nobody's uh. Thrown that bone in my direction.
We are hoping and expecting that if you're willing to, that you would continue until there's a replacement. Um a- as as is the case with every. Everyone on here, we'd appreciate your service.
Well, like I said, I was just going with the uh.
Yeah. We've been through, through a bit.
My point being is that the likelihood of us having another meeting, I mean. It's summertime, we don't have as much stuff.
Yeah.
Coming by the our table, so.
No, but we would.
The point being is this could conceivably be my last meeting if I don't get that call. It's my point.
Yeah, and and I would like to to offer to you if you're willing to continue serving until the the replacement comes, we would appreciate it. If there's a replacement or if they appoint you.
Surely.
Yeah, that's the way it's written.
Do that?
Yeah, it's not, I. I I we we've had numerous discussions over time that that's the, in in order to continue to serve the public, we very much would like you to continue. Um or any any person on this this council or commission to continue up until there's any changes.
Thank you, I'll be. Honored to. With that, if there's anything else, I will close the meeting. It is uh seven eighteen, and call this. Session of the Imperial. Planning Commission. No longer in order and closed.